I'd like to call this meeting as the President of the City Council's order. Clerk Paul Rol.
Mayor Mavory here.
Councilmember Newman here.
Gomez.
Here.
McCall.
Here.
McCrankey.
Here.
Would you please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the heavens, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna start the meeting with public comment. We have public comment at the beginning of the meeting as well as at the end. You can speak both times. If you have something you'd like to address to the council, feel free to come up to the podium there. The mic's already on and just say your name. That's all we need, please. Take the time in the meeting to make sure you feel good about what you have a chance to express, please. Whoever would like to start first? And when you, if we're gonna show the slides, then you shut the lights off when you're ready for that.
Uh, we're Dave and Angie Bader. Uh, we live in the 500 block of North Chestnut Street in the beautiful town of Princeton. And uh, this is what we see as we look out our windows on a daily basis. This is kind of a five-year rundown of what our neighbor's house looks like. I know there's other members in this room that are from the 500 block and they've had to deal with what we've had to deal with as well.
We do intend to sell our house. We need to get away from this. And with the way it looks, I would like to know how we're gonna do that. And I don't have a clue.
Like, so this kind of a five-year progression with those lines?
This is the kind of activity you see on a daily basis?
That happens in other places too.
True. Not this guy.
I've never seen one quite like this.
You will actually notice in some of the pictures, it looks like it's been cleaned up. And at one point, they started to clean it up, but then they started hauling even more in.
Exactly.
You wanna know about the dog?
Uh, that's the dog. I have a feeling it got into their stash personally, but yeah, it was found in the backyard and he didn't care. This is a video of one of their friends coming out of their house. And you will see in the next clip, she thought it was okay to come up and sit down on our front porch. And I wasn't happy about that. My son had just finished mowing the yard out front. Thank God he wasn't out there when she did that. It is a dump truck. And this is how they get everything around. Once they get the trailers there, they get the mowers and the four-wheelers out.
At all times of the night.
All times.
All times.
Four-wheelers are running constantly. Anytime of day.
And night.
And night.
Angie, can you guys confirm your tents, people live in tents in the bed?
Can we confirm that they actually live in it? I can't confirm, but I do have a video of uh, the end of October. And I was getting ready to leave for work about seven in the morning and you could see somebody in there getting dressed. So why they would be in that pop-up shed getting dressed if they weren't staying in it, beyond me. But there's all kinds of people that come and go.
It's summer, you know? And it's baking out there with the hose.
And shower. I mean, it's non-stop for loud trucks, you know? When they start a truck up, they're, it's put to the floor until the red blueberry's sitting there popping off.
And they'll sit in the front yard.
Do donuts in the front yard, throw mud. They throw mud on my house and actually my mailbox right now. There's mud all swung over it from just over a week.
That's over the weekend.
Yep. Mud's gone three weeks. I mean, it's.
They started, the fires just burned that junk. Two fires started.
There's been many.
Several fires over the years. There's the shed in the back corner there.
The pop-up shed.
It's taken a new appearance from what this picture is, and it's not a better one. It's got pallets and stuff stacked around it holding the roof on.
We can't remember what lived in there.
I don't wanna know that much about that.
Well, I see mice there.
As a matter of fact, it's been kind of built up, it's like falling down. I think it looks like that.
Yes. I mean, you just never know what to expect from this, from these guys. It's constant. I've had them trespass before off my property because they used to drive through my lawn. And they'd cut in my driveway as a way to get in and out of their front yard.
So when you tell them to stop, they go crazy. The last time CEO got them, it was unreal and we had no choice but to call the cops. She got out there and started screaming bloody murder and told Alan to get over and destroy our property. And I got my phone out and as soon as she saw me starting to record, he made her go in the house.
I mean, you can see things from the street, but you don't see the full picture. They stretch your say it all.
Hey, don't forget the pond there too, like the pond.
Yeah, and there used to be, back when his mom, when the gal was in jail for a little while, his mom lived in the house and she put up the fence and they had a koi pond. And uh, there's some.
There's the ducks. They were coming back.
Anyway, in this pond, we, I seen them actually taking old TVs and stuff and throwing them at it and marrying all the stuff. But I don't know if they ever did re, you know, dig all that stuff out. It used to be up next to the truck.
Is it a truck park?
Oh, yeah. This one in the back, there's a black one in the back, in the corner. But that red one, you'll see. The red one.
I went over and talked to Alan, said, hey, you had to knock it off. Music Blair and the food truck asleep.
This is correct. For coming to see it.
Uh, this is right now.
All kinds of lawn mowers and pickup trucks. We've seen trucks get pulled in here, cut up with saws, all through the course of the evening. And then maybe drop down on the trailer on this.
Boats?
Boats. They had several boats.
Tires all over.
And this is how they get them in the backyard. They've got a mower and the four-wheeler trying to pull them.
This is just, yeah.
This was Saturday morning, I think.
That's the red truck right there with fenders on it.
And there's other vehicles like that possibly sitting in the back there that take loud, that races up and down the streets. You've got people coming and going, it's just crazy. I wish the value would have played.
And that's where the truck landed. It's halfway in and halfway out because they can't get it any further.
And the front end is off that truck.
Oh, yeah.
It's going, that part of the engine and the fan. And you've got tires on the fan.
There's three or four tires.
That's actually how it looks.
Right now, today?
Right now. That's where it's sitting. Can you get it even farther?
Yes.
We're gonna turn the lights back on and receive other people's like business. Okay, so we'd like to invite any other neighbors, please come forward to state your name, please.
My name's Carolyn Dahl. I live across the street from that place. It's, it's 526 North Chestnut. That's where that place is. And the last picture that you saw was last Saturday. And I couldn't sleep, but I'm a light sleeper anyway, but at two o'clock in the morning, they were trying to move that truck from, that red truck, from the driveway to where it is at now. And they got it halfway and then in the, like, seven o'clock in the morning, he took that four-wheeler and tried to push that truck and flung mud all over the street, my sidewalk, their, their driveway, their mailbox. I called the police and I asked the dispatcher to send a car to look at this. I didn't see a car come. I've got pictures of the mud and I would think that'd be like grass in the summertime, you know, because it's slippery. And he does this any time of the day or the night. We all think it's a drug house because people come and go ten, five, five, ten, fifteen minutes. They only stay. And he has different people come. Sometimes they live in the house with and sometimes they don't. They just come and go. And you'll see him dance on the porch. They've got chickens and a rooster on that enclosed front porch. And we're just tired of it and we're like, something done now. I've heard that they're trying to condemn it. I think that condemning, condemning should be fast-tracked because he's not gonna be paying those fines completely. And we're just, we want something done. Because like Angie said, if we would want to sell our house, we can't. Because nobody would wanna live there in this neighborhood. There's another house three doors north of me that um, has a truck in the back, same same yard. Now he's got a car in the driveway that felt like the same thing. I think this person was living there now, because he was living on Newcliffe Street. And it just deteriorates our property value. And none of you would want to live across from that. I was talking to Angie. I thought it was thirteen years. She said it was eleven years.
He moved in in 2012. That's when the house was sold on auction.
So, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Feel free, anyone else like to get up and speak, please. We'd like to have you do that. Couple things on public comment period, it's not necessarily a time for us to respond, but we're gonna respond tonight. And I'd like to ask the councilmembers, they'd like to respond as well. So here's the situation. I, I will own this because I've been mayor now for eight months. And this problem's not gotten any better in the eight months I've been mayor. So first off, I, I'm gonna own it. I'm gonna apologize to you folks right now. Um, I've bird-dogged this. I've had, I brought it up before to different department heads. And um, I got an update about three weeks ago. I wanted to know where they were with the fines. Uh, this, um, at this address, they paid this year alone, in 2023, I'm talking, they paid a little over $6,000 in fines. Now, that doesn't solve any problem. I understand that that doesn't do anything. There's about forty-some thousand levied against that property right now. Uh, we had a meeting about a week and a half ago with Teresa and myself and Pete. And we discussed this property and we discussed a plan of action for that property. And Pete is implementing that plan of action as we speak. And so what I'd like to say for this evening is, at this point, Dave and Angie, do we have your phone number that we could reach you? Let's give us that number right now and I'm gonna have Pete and Teresa write this down. What we're gonna do is we're gonna get you an update. Give us about ten days. We're gonna get you an update on this. We're gonna give you a call on the phone, let you know what's going on, okay?
Okay.
So go ahead and give us that number right now.
Mine is eight one five. One five?
Want to write it down?
Want to write it down?
I'll take it, so play.
Eight one five, eight seven eight, two zero one seven.
Great.
And Dave?
This is eight one five, eight seven eight, two zero one seven.
So the plan's gonna be that within ten days, you're gonna get a phone call from City Hall with an update of what's going on.
Thank you.
And not, not an email, a phone call, dialogue. And um, every council member here, three years ago, it's an old story when we were discussing chickens. I brought the pictures to the council, I was on the council time, and said, what would you rather live next to? This mess or chickens? And uh, I'm just embarrassed, we just haven't gained in three years' time. So again, it's on me now. I'm the, if the buck stops here, I'm just disappointed and I feel bad that you hadn't come tonight. But this is how we get things done and thank you for bringing to our attention one more time. Because you're right. The question is, would any one, any one of us here on the council wanna live next to that? The answer's no. We would not wanna come home at five o'clock and have that mess and then split up with it twenty-four hours a day.
It's nuts.
It's not safe.
It's not fair to anybody.
You can't go outside, it should stay in your yard.
It's not fair to anybody.
If you're out in your yard, you're just in the middle of the chaos. If they're outside and they're cranked up, look out. She's mean.
Oh, yes.
She's mean. She's crazy outside.
I have a little side job. Michael, do you want me to go up there and talk or?
I'd like for you to do that, please, for the record, please. Make your name, I know who you are, please.
Hi, I'm Scott Dahl. I live on 601 North Chestnut Street, next door to all these people right here, Jerry. And I came back from, I do a cleaning job after I retired. It was during homestead. You know, the street council. And I was sitting there. And I came home sitting on the porch, just ready to kick back, was tired. I opened up a beer and I'm sitting on it, I got a screened porch that faced their house. Usually they sit in the back. I said, that'd be nice. There was a guy standing on the step, long hair, thin backpack on his back. And he's just bobbing and weaving. You know, I've been around my life, you know, I'm sixty-seven, I've seen trucks. This guy was, he was out. And he, like this, there was no music player or nothing. Look at this. Then he tried to find his backpack. He couldn't get his backpack out. And he's going like this. So I called the police. They sent two squads. And there's, I know there's not much here to figure like that. But I went up, tried to talk to him. I don't know what was said. They left and he sat on the steps, started bobbing and weaving, bobbing and weaving. But how would you like to be walking down the street with your kids or walking a dog? You don't know if they're gonna attack you or, it's, it's dangerous. It really is. That's all I can say. And thank you and I'm glad you guys.
I would like to point one thing out. In the video, we pointed out the girl that walked out of the house and then came over and sat on the porch. The reason I have a problem with this, is a month after that, she was arrested with over forty grams of heroin. And she was sitting on my front porch. But when she got bailed out of jail, she was back in the neighborhood.
Well, I'd like to see, does anyone else like to speak on this subject? So we have a plan of action and we will take that and you will hear from the City Hall within ten days as a phone call. All right, very good. Embarrassed by this whole thing. Let's go ahead now. Anybody else for public comment on other topics? Please go ahead. Come up to the mic, please.
I'm Sonya Lockey and I am a short-term rental owner in town here. And your situation is deplorable and I can completely appreciate your frustration with that situation. That is, that is awful. And it lends very well to my situation. So just a little background. We bought a garage in the city of Princeton back in 2021 for my husband's hobby and it came with the house. And no one would have missed that house if we had torn that house down. It had a troubled history prior to our owning it. Uh, there are multiple police calls to the residents, disputes with multiple neighbors, uh, and a huge garbage problem. The home required gutting and extensive yard cleanup, including the removal of dead trees and an eye sore beshed, which somebody lived in. So I can appreciate your plight. We worked on the home from May of 2021 and we continue to upgrade the property today. And we will continue to do it. We considered a long-term rental, but due to the pandemic, it brought some issues to light that we did not wanna be long-term rental owners and possibly run into situations as a fourth dimension. Um, so we decided that an option that would work for us would be a short-term rental. We saw the need in Princeton. We have limited lodging. Um, we thought it would be fun. It's our family, kind of our family adventure. And my husband and everybody fixed up the house. Pretty much ninety percent of it we had ourselves and fixed it up. So we had our first guest in 2022, November of 2022. Prior to November of 2022, I wanted to make sure that I was following the city guidelines. I called the city clerk's office, asked, you know, what the guidance were. There weren't any at the time. And I was transferred over to Teresa's office, left a message saying, this is what we're doing, please call me. I did not get a call back. I consider Princeton to be a very friendly neighborhood and community. We've lived here for over thirty years now. Um, I think that we're a small town and we're trying to work together to address the different issues and aspects that come up so we all live in a nice community. We've done well in so many aspects, including our festivals and events, strong people who come to Princeton. I've expressed this to the individual businesses and leaderships, as well as I share it with anyone interested in Princeton um, that comes to our community or stops into my business. I'll relate different events and they come back for our events. I'm very proud of our community. This summer, I was quite surprised to hear something regarding the short-term rentals. It was a letter dated July 1st, 2023, postmarked on July 3rd, which I was, which I received it on July 7th, letting me know that there would now be a hotel tax or pillow tax, as it's known, on the short-term rentals for July, for the July guests, that it was due in August of 2023. The actual letter was addressed to me at our short-term rental address, but sent to my home address. And someone went to great lengths to find me and let me know that I was expected to pay this tax through this letter. Now, knowing that I called, knowing that I've been completely above board about running the short-term, we've had it on Facebook, et cetera. Imagine getting this letter after reaching out and all that regarding an ordinance that was set forth in March of 2023. And this is the first I've heard of it. I expressed my frustration with this communication to our mayor, Mayor Mavory, who encouraged communication with Victoria Yeston, our tourism director. I have spoken with Victoria and we've emailed. I've encouraged better communication with the short-term rental owners as we've had a growing population, which I think stimulated this whole conversation about the hotel, um, short-term rental tax. I believe that we can do better and I've expressed that, that we can do better with the short-term rental communication and the owners as we're neighbors, as a community, and it's mutually beneficial for all of us to work together. My first concern was how this letter came about. Second, that I was expected to collect a tax as per the state statute. But the person that is collecting money is the one that is supposed to collect the taxes. And we've gone around a little bit about that. Um, Airbnb is the one that is supposed to collect the taxes, Verbo, and then they pass money forward. There's a lot of confusion as to how this is supposed to happen in Princeton. In an attempt to improve communication, Victoria and Teresa invited us to a meeting to gather STR owners for a discussion for a mutually beneficial relationship. But it turns out, it was an instructional seminar on how to fill out the tax form for this, uh, using the auditing firm. And it was directed by the auditing firm, Azavar. We were only slotted one hour in the room out there and it took over twenty minutes to just get the audio visual, um, and technical difficulties sorted out. So they went through the form, told us how to do the form online, which was a misguided or, or... We all have online platforms, we know how to fill out online forms. So we spent the entire time filling this out. Any questions that we had were directed towards Azavar, I think it was Azavar, Azavar. And that was on the sixth we know of. It was, the meeting was ended abruptly to accommodate the city council meeting. There was no discussion, there was no communication really among the Airbnb owners. And that was what I thought the meeting was going to encourage. But instead, we were shown how to fill out a form, which we all know how to fill out forms online. I was very disappointed. Then recently, I received a certified letter from the city of Princeton sometime after December 7th. And I could not pick it up. I do not know what the letter said. I've been home out after a surgery until just this past week with Christmas Eve. That was my big outing. I assume it was returned to the city and I assume that it has to do with the STRs. It was only addressed to me. I have no, I've had no communication regarding any topics despite everyone having my email, phone, and the address. It just so happened to, I just so happened to notice in the Bureau of County Republican and followed up with the city council meetings that there would be a second reading tonight on the hotel pillow tax for the hotels and short-term rentals that instituted a penalty. So with that said, I'd like to reserve time tonight to discuss that ordinance with the matters up for discussion before the city council tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonya. Does there anyone else like to speak to the council? And then you still have an opportunity at the very end of the meeting to speak as well. So for you folks here tonight, here for a specific reason, we'd love for you to stick around for the entire meeting. At this point, what'll happen is we go into, uh, once a year, we have the year-end department update, departmental updates. So each department has gonna speak at the podium for a few minutes telling about their department in 2023 and kind of a, just a summary of what they have. And then give a brief update of what they look forward in 2024. Love to have you stick around. If you'd like to stick around, please do. We're gonna go ahead now and, did you have a recorder?
Um, actually, I'm gonna start it off and then I think Quinn's gonna. Um, I did ask the department has to kind of keep it brief, so we're not here too long. But uh, some do have a couple of handouts that they wanted to give you, they have some statistics and stuff like that for you too. I'm gonna give a very brief, um, update of 2023. Again, this is January through December. A little bit different than our normal fiscal year, but just some very high summaries here. And then a couple of things to go with the door, okay?
I just interrupt for a second. If anyone who was here for the Chestnut Street project, we've got a lot more stuff to talk about. If you're not interested in any of that, you can head for the door right now.
Hey, hey. Okay, uh, just a couple of things on, in terms of staffing and I guess I'm gonna keep this very, very brief. Uh, eight total new hires, uh, three retirements this last year. Of those retirements is seventy years combined total service. So that's significant. Um, I keep on hearing over and over, it's scary to me to see of who's retiring and even in the next year. It's, it is, it is scary how much knowledge we're gonna be losing. Uh, good news for debt, long-term debt payments were paid off, which is significant. Um, we secured two grant sources for the depot parking lot resurfacing. So that in combination with their money I reserved, setback from the ARPA funds, we'll be ready to tackle that here in the spring. Ollies had their groundbreaking. Um, you guys obviously are seeing more communication. I'm trying to keep that every week. You guys obviously are seeing more communication. I'm trying to keep that every week going. If you have questions, always, always reach out. But the department heads have done a great job. If I need an update on something, they get it right to you, so I can get it to you guys. Obviously, we sold Perry Plaza, two residential lots, and the Ollie's property, which was about a hundred and thirty acres. That was significant. We did transition. The city ordinance is online. That was a, probably a ten-year process to finally get that done. And now we are continually keeping that updated. Janet's really taking control of that process and making sure the ordinance agency that does it online for us, they get everything updated as quickly as we have requested them to do. Website is being reconstructed right now under the IT department's, even its guidance. Coordination implementation of the UTD ordinance and dispersment of the plates. Again, not an easy process. Everybody that went through this, we do have an estimated thirty-five page registration. We do have some that are exempt, but I won't include those. Street concerts, I'm gonna let Tori try to touch on this. I'm sure she will. But the only thing I will say there is completely new role for us to be even tackling this from grassroots. And I will be the first to say, we nailed it. I've never seen the crowds like I've seen at the street concerts this year. So it was, it was fantastic to see. And you'll hear from all the departments on those, on other topics. And we're only as good because of those departments. I will continually say that we, our department heads are fantastic. So I'll let them cover those, some of their highlights. Going ahead, I have hit on, it's been a slow go, but we're starting to get there, a succession planning process. As I mentioned, with all the retirements coming up, we're probably looking at two to four replacements, new hires coming up this year. And then the next couple of years, it's just gonna be a whole little trickle effect after that. So it's just gonna be continuous. And if we're not training our internal staff the way we need to be, we need to be focusing on it. Redo the capital improvement project, project projection sheet, I'm sorry to say. We have about a ten-year span that we look at for capital projects. And that needs to be updated because the last couple of years, we really tackled some of those capital projects, whether it was equipment or capital projects, infrastructure-wise. We had some extra ARPA funds and stuff, and we were able to start tackling some of those. So that whole sheet needs to be updated. Depot parking lot reconstruction will be done this year, I'm happy to say. I am actually happy to say as well, the coordination of the Main and Peru intersection resurfacing project for the spring and summer. Being able to convince and nudge IDOT to move that project up. It wasn't even on their radar, but if we're tearing up Main Street, what a perfect time to get that intersection redone. And I'm thankful, Stoller's office really stepped forward and helped us with getting that done. So that will be ready to go at the same time as Main Street's done. So we're not disrupting our businesses twice. So, planning, oh, and I should say, in our portion of that project, since it is in IDOT, we split that cost with IDOT, is very minimal of what it could be for that intersection. So that was good to be able to work that out with them. The other big thing that'll be coming forward, Tim and Jeff will be, and Scott will be excited. We have to start the planning for the redundancy loop for electric and water, wastewater for north of eighty. There's so much development happening out there that they are dependent on that, those services, especially water, electric, for that redundancy. So we can make sure that we're providing what we need to, safety-wise and for services. We will roll out the garbage trucks this year. They are slated for the spring. So that was, you know, the backup on those, out of our control. The totes are ready. Cody, you're waiting for this. He'll still be happy to see it happen. And the new website will roll out. Update, we will be updating the policy and benefits manual as well. That's much needed. I think our policy manual is a little bit outdated, and we need to tackle that. Adopt new and updated building codes for, through ordinance. I know that's another one that's been on the radar. And all departments, again, they coordinate their ideas with me. And I always appreciate when they're open with me to bounce ideas off of, and kind of think outside the box with some of this stuff. So they truly do think ahead, and that helps considerably. So that's all I have.
Yeah, you took a lot of my bullet points, but I do have anything else here. Start by saying happy new year. Let's make it a good one. The handout that you just received are all the street sanitation and cemetery goals and accomplishments for this past year. This list will be in your budget packet come the budget meeting, which I think is in March. So there will probably be some add-ons to that. So electrical were a few of these, and if you have any questions, just let me know. And Teresa already mentioned about the garbage trucks. As you're all aware, the two automated garbage trucks were ordered back in March of 2022, have yet to be assembled. The reason for the delay was that there were certain components for the chassis that were not readily available at that time. Just a few months ago, this issue was resolved. So now the two trucks are in Scranton, Iowa, having the calf and the hopper installed. So like Jesus said, probably the end of March is when it'll be delivered, about 2024. So I'm sure, I'm positive it'll be here now. And our goal with this is to have a smooth transition between the rear load and the automated. You know, it's gonna be tough, but it's gonna be well worth it. And then another goal is to develop a plan on the tote delivery. We're gonna be, we're gonna be numbering and documenting all these totes for each address. And we'll definitely let the residents know a few weeks before they are delivered. So, and then I'd like to touch on the air burner. You know, that was a big purchase, and I thank you for your support with that purchase. It has been working well for us. It was delivered back in June. But we do have some issues with the yard bags. When we put yard bags in it, it breaks that curtain, be a lot of smoke. So I think the goal I would like to see done is partition off an area next to the existing brush drop-off, just for bags. That way we can pile them up out there and just feed the burner slow, you know, a few bags here as we go. I think that's probably the only way around that. Other than that, it's been doing really well, you know, but no complaints. Maybe from the transfer station a couple times, but that was a dear start up. Call you that. Let me see. The street made this program for this past year was a success, although there was a few areas taken off just because of the numbers. Along with newly paved streets, we were able to install the twelve ADA ramps on South Business District, which was awesome. They were ready. That was a good move. So the spring will be working with IDOT on the Main Peru intersection rebuild. And shortly after that, I'm sure Main can prove that just beyond Courthouse will be milled and paved and professionally striped. Maybe keep those thirty-degree angles apart means would be nice. So the goal for the rest of this maintenance program, street maintenance, is to prioritize other street payment areas that stay within the budget. Hopefully, we can get some more areas paved after the Main Street job. Another goal pertaining to the street program is to, is to install drainage, storm sores, and curves on South First between Park Avenue West and Boyd, and also burn the street curbs. We need to find ways to get that done before the paving commences. And also, putting up street would be something we should start really looking at, ways to fund that project. It's gonna be a big project. You know, I have a new, new store, there's both storm scooters, no curves, you know, a very busy street. So like, see that get done. There's a lot of the pubs that the days get done. Like to briefly touch on two parking lots. Teresa, you mentioned the depot. I'm confident you have the underground work, and the paving will be accomplished this year. And then Scooter's Lodge, it'd be nice to visit that lodge and develop a plan on, a design comparable to like the Spoons Lodge. And the city has started a tree program with the help of Taylor's Way this year. Kind of had a late start, so we were able to get twenty-eight trees planted. And then, but the goal of one hundred more for 2024. You might have borrowed your big water wagon there, right? So that's a good thing. And one last thing, back in September, we were having issues with the curb site recycling, being thrown away out of the transfer station. We were informed that there was too many, it was too contaminated with certain plastics. So we started informing the residents of this with, you know, what can and cannot be put in the recycling. And since October, all those have been accepted. So the residents are really doing well with that. We still, every now and then, have to remind somebody that has these plastics in there. It's been, it's been good. Kind of a heading for us. So with that, you guys have any questions?
On the air burner, what percentage of our brush and everything is in bags, would you say? The run and the smoke, I mean, is our bigger percentage of bags, or is it less?
Well, in the fall, it's over fifty percent of bags. A lot of the, throughout the year, I don't know, maybe probably forty percent compared to, not even compared to the brush.
Are they the plastic or paper?
Pardon me?
Paper bags?
Yeah, biodegradable. That's all that we accept.
Teresa, have we had any complaints since this air burner's been in place from residential?
We haven't gotten any at city hall. I know you, I think maybe have had some more questions.
Yeah, we've had a couple from the transfer station, because they're their neighbors.
Right.
And the initial start-up, you get some small.
But no work compared to what?
Right. Just curious where we were.
No, it was a good, it was a good purchase.
It's amazing how much, you have private figures, how much you can burn in a day when it comes to treating, you know, laws and that.
Yeah, we, yeah, we cut down two trees. This was just a couple weeks ago. Hadn't burned that day.
I wish we would have had with the duration.
Yeah, I would say.
Well, it sounds like the education part is going well.
On the air burner, yeah. Yeah, we had somebody come in for a week and teach us all the, you know, what to do, what not to do. But it's pretty easy. But you just have to have patience when you're loading in.
With the recycling, I think that it may be necessary for us, if the city can remind our citizens on an annual basis or quarterly basis of what they can and can't do.
I think Tori made up the flyers that we sent out to all the residents.
It sounds like it's gonna be a state, yeah.
Does she get new residents?
New residents, and you still have to keep reminding all the residents, the who's and don'ts. That way it doesn't become a problem.
Good job. Thank you. Clint, with the recent retirement, or you're coming pretty close to it, how is your succession process going? As far as like, even when we hired a new director or a new head of a department, are you getting other people or other staff that are capable of doing it as far as involved in case something happens?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, it's kind of, you know, showing these guys, you know, what goes on here and there. You mean in terms of somebody from the department?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
No, I think that's very important, and speaking from a military perspective. You always wanna, you always wanna teach these two, two members below you. So in case something does happen where we weren't able to get somebody to be director or head, or a head, you're only gonna go ahead and continue operations constantly. So if nothing, you know, falls through.
We've worked on, we've worked on that.
Yeah, I'm confident that we've worked on this.
Thanks, Clint, for coming. I appreciate it.
Gonna miss you.
Excellent. Teresa, she has any mic? Jeff Mangreech, would you like to come up?
Okay, so our 2023 year was very similar with just a couple odd goals. And I'll go down the list here. One of the things that we actually started in the fall of '22 was demolishing the old water plant. They actually completed that, I believe, in March of '23, if I'm not mistaken. That was quite a process, and they ran into a lot of unknowns, underground areas. But they did a good job. And then also this year, after that was completed, we went out for bids for a new storage building slash welding shop that we're gonna put in its place. It's been started. We got the foundation in, and now we're just waiting for the building to show up. How did Ollie's, kind of Teresa touched on this, we actually removed about eighteen hundred feet of three-phase overhead line, which we like to put as much underground as we can over, you know, every year. But just to prep for Ollie's, like north of John Deere Road to the old Midwest Bus, where we crossed the road there, we eliminated that, put it all underground. So that was about eighteen hundred feet of overhead that we eliminated. Let's see. Yeah, then we replaced it with about fourteen hundred foot of three-phase, because we rerouted it a little bit. We got Ollie's permanent service in, that we did the last final hookup, I think it was like the week before Christmas. The permanent service is hooked up and ready to go. And we also, they are getting fiber from us. We had run about two thousand feet of that, get it in there. Then down on South Chestnut, from Central to Peru, we rebuilt that whole single-phase line, new poles, new conductor. Did the same thing on South First Street from Peru to the Park Avenue. So those two projects were about thirty-one hundred feet of new single-phase line that we rebuilt. One of the unexpected's we had this year was we had the opportunity to buy some parts from a couple engines up in Minnesota, identical to our engines three and four over here, which are kind of odd engines. So we, this was just awesome that we found these. So we sent three of our guys, two, two of the brand-new hirees, they've been on the job about a week, if I'm not mistaken, sent them up there for two weeks to dismantle that engine and ship it back to Princeton. And we got parts for an engine that we could never find. We had a visit from I E P A in November. They come about every two to three years just to check on the power plant, see if we're record-keeping and everything is in line. They add new things every time they come, but they were satisfied with the information. We had to send them some after the visit, but they're more than satisfied. But it's every year, it's getting tougher and tougher to run these engines because of rules that are being put in place. Probably the one thing this year that we don't normally do was the April 4th tornado that took down thirty-two poles on our hammering transmission line, the only line in the town that ties us to the outside world. It happened about eleven o'clock on April 4th. We had to generate until Saturday, about seven PM, straight through twenty-four hours. Straight through twenty-four hours a day. So it was a total of a hundred and four and a half hours of generation. And the guys did great over there. Most people probably didn't even know what was going on. Here, here's one that, uh, that we have, a lot of people don't always believe us, but we had seventy-one reported outages during the, the twenty-three calendar year. Fifty-three of them were from squirrels. Believe it or not, three of them were from birds, five of them were trees falling on the line or branches. We had four equipment failures, three of them were storms that come through and, you know, things happen. And then three of them were unknown. But the, the, the good thing is the average outage time, if you average out all those seventy-one, uh, outages, was only thirty-seven minutes. You know? I know when you're out of power, it seems like forever. I get that. And if we had a way of eliminating these squirrels, we'd be doing great.
Yeah, then eighteen hundred pieces of overhead wire.
Yeah, yeah. We only have about twenty more miles to go. And then I say this kind of facetiously, but probably one of the most important things we did this year is we changed all the light bulbs on the Christmas lights on the top of the buildings. So, um, we've gotten a lot of compliments on that.
Pretty nice.
As far as staffing goes, we had one transfer, uh, from the electric generation to wastewater and one retiree out of the power plant. And both of those positions have been filled and those employees are doing great. Our, um, goals for twenty twenty-four is to finish the storage building. And we hope to have that done by May first, actually, but it all depends on when the building shows up. Um, our, our big project for next winter is we're hoping to overhaul en- engine number eight. That's, that's a huge project. We've been kind of building up to it, to the overhaul for the last few years, getting parts and, and pre-buying things. But hopefully we can get that in this year's budget. Then as always, we, we convert as much overhead to underground. We like to do at least a thousand feet every year. So we'll, we'll continue on that. And as Teresa mentioned, the eight twelve feeder which runs along Sixth Street, we want to get that across the interstate as the redundancy for the, all the development that's happening out there. And then, um, we've been working on the last probably year and a half, this is more I T, setting up city wireless where all the city employees can have computers in their cars or whatnot and be able to connect to the city network anywhere in the city. So that, like, that one's been in the works for a long time and we're hoping to get it up, up and running this year. That's, that's about it for electric department. If anybody has any questions?
Jeff, just real quick, uh, I've got a, a number eight engine, how many megawatts is that one?
That's our big one, that's eighty-eight hundred megawatts, or, well, eight point eight megawatts.
Eight point eight megawatts. And an overhaul, something like that, is that a couple million dollar project, roughly, just roughly?
It, it would, today it would probably be about two million, but we probably spent seven hundred fifty, eight hundred thousand on stuff for it already.
So about one point, I think.
That's right.
Um, just, I was wondering, is that, uh, anything with silver on, uh, now that project going?
Nothing, nothing definite at this point, but we are moving forward with, uh, the location out of the transfer station. Um, there, there should be some preliminary work happening out there. They haven't signed a contract with the vendor or anything yet, but it is, it is looking promising.
Jeff, I know I've asked you this a couple times, I don't know if it's you or Teresa, as far as funding goes, but I, I saw a lot of people, even out of town, ask me about, uh, electric vehicle charging. I know we've got some private entities that might be looking at some things, but as far as the city goes, have we seen any funding? Or have we worked on any of that? I get a lot of questions on that.
Yes or no? Um, we are on the list for the I A D corridor through the state, which is handling the federal fund. So we're dealing with the state.
Thank you very much.
Very good.
Tim Forrest, call, mona, please.
I don't have any gifts or handouts, pretty much. I'm gonna start, I got a couple departments, uh, do the wastewater and water, so I'm gonna start with the wastewater tonight. First one to kind of start off with, uh, we're finishing up a performance pipeline, line one thousand feet of sewer behind Midland State Bank, which is gonna be a huge benefit for us. That area back there took on a lot of inflow and infiltration. A lot of you guys probably have gotten calls of the ponding back there. Well, the only way that drained over the years was the sanitary sewer took it. And we know what caused problems on Thompson Street and whatnot. This will definitely reduce that dramatically, drastically. And that's a big project, uh, we didn't have to tear up anything to do it. Everything was done underground, so cost is a lot cheaper than it would have been if we would have had to tear up yards, fences, pools and all that. Also, we, uh, have been working with Champlin and Geosynthec on a nutrient assessment reduction plan. This plan is required by the Illinois EPA. And what they are wanting and studying right now is the effects of phosphorus being discharged from wastewater plants. And, uh, at the Gulf of Mexico, they've got a dead zone. And they believe that the wastewater plants are contributing to that dead zone. And so we need to come up with a plan on how we're gonna treat her phosphorus before it's discharged. We are very low for phosphorus here in Princeton, but they will put a very strict limit. This limit will go in place maybe by twenty thirty-two. So we need to have something, um, put in place on how to handle this, whether it's gonna be mechanical or chemical. Ideally, mechanical would be the cheaper route. It's a one-time expense, chemical is a yearly expense. Twenty thirty-two, like I said, is when this has to be put in place. You have to have it up and running by twenty thirty-five. So the study will continue for quite some time. Um, we did pay, I believe, Teresa, we did pay for that contract with Geosynthec. So now it's just. Yeah, so most of it's gonna be in-house where we're doing testing of the, um, the stream, Bureau Creek, uh, Skin Creek and all those, to determine what level we are contributing. Also, we, uh, continue to, uh, clean and televise sewers throughout the summer. That's always one of those jobs that is time-consuming, but very beneficial. Uh, we found a lot of problems when we do this and this leads to our capo project. And I believe over the years, by us doing this and being aggressive, I feel that we've dr- drastically reduced, uh, the overflows. The pumps are not going out quite with a test of this, the pumps aren't going out nearly as frequent as they used to in the quantities. So it's showing improvement, but we all know there's a lot of underground infrastructure still out there. As far as goals go for the, the plant upcoming and, and the future, with that sewer camera, we're gonna, we're looking at upgrading that. Uh, the current one we have is fifteen years old and it's, it's seen better days. It's been through a lot, um, it's just getting more out, can't find parts for it. So in order us to keep moving forward with the televising and the projects, capo projects, that would be a good purchase for us in this upcoming budget year. Hopefully, Marion Street, we will be able to do something with that this year. I believe we were awarded the grant, the funding we're just waiting on.
Pretty good agreement.
Yeah, once that all happens, we can move forward with that project. I know the people on Marion Street feel they're tired of calling and asking me when it's gonna get done. But, and I feel for them because we've worked hard and we're just waiting. And, uh, also in the short term and long term is, uh, wanna continue updating and replacing our older lift stations, getting everything that's fifteen foot in the ground, like to get it above ground, safety reasons, you don't like guys in confined space. And, uh, also get the SCADA system to all the lift stations. We have twelve lift stations, uh, SCADA is at nine of them currently and we still have three to go. So hopefully here in the next year or two, we can get that, everything will be, uh, monitored. We will get a notification on any alarms, anything that goes wrong there. And you guys can respond and help save any backups. And then just a long-term thing to think about is the wastewater plant's twenty-plus years old. It's, um, twenty, twenty-five year life expectancy is what they kind of figure. So it's something to start considering is we're gonna have to be looking at an upgrade in the next five to eight years. Starting the process sooner than later will be the right way to go. And the Illinois EPA eventually will be telling us and mandating that, that's what we do. Uh, okay, on the water side, um, some of the highlights for the year is, uh, we did an upgrade on our SCADA system at the water plant. Uh, we got it more aligned with what, uh, Jeff has at the power plant. Uh, this is gonna help us out. Steven can now help us manage the program. Uh, when we have anything go wrong, he can help us. Company we have before did a great job, but they've downsized, it's hard to get someone in to help us. So this will be a huge benefit for the water plant. The water meters, we are replacing water meters. It's a slow process, we knew it was gonna be a slow process, but unfortunately COVID slowed it down even more. You can't get, everybody, we can't get a microchip. Everybody's fighting for microchips, so when we place an order, we place it a year out. And they basically say, there's five communities, you're fighting and we'll divvy up whatever we got. So this year we've installed five hundred and fifty meters to date. We've done sixteen hundred and we've got roughly thirty-nine, thirty-nine hundred total will be complete. So we're roughly just like a third, or a third there, so. Got a ways to go, but the guys are working hard when they got time. When we get meters in, we make appointments, um, and we get, get out there, get them changed, it doesn't take long. So if you haven't got your meter changed, be patient, we will get to you. Lori downstairs has put a list together with the help of John. And we make the calls and we go and install them. It's been working real good, real good. Also this year, something else that kept us kind of, uh, behind on the water meters, not as aggressive, was, uh, a lot of locates that came in with this, uh, MetroCon fiber project going on. You don't really realize how much time a locate takes up until you see, uh, locate coming in from this company. One locate is not just locate one address. One locate usually came in and it could be five addresses, it could be a block, it could be numerous, ten locates in one. With our count, what we have, it was roughly right around five hundred locates Metro called in this summer. And like I said, there's embedded in that could be five to ten in there, so you're looking, we figure there's, you know, if there's thirty-nine hundred water meters in this town, basically every resident, every commercial business had to be located. Um, and that will continue because now they're starting on the next phase of running it to the houses. So we will be doing it all over again next summer. There was a total of twelve hundred and fifty locates done and five hundred more for Metro this year. So it's a lot, a lot going on there. Also, um, one thing that I'd like to highlight on is, uh, it's kind of a, a nice thing when, um, departments can work together and, um, thank the fire department for their help in pressure testing hydrants this year. They stepped up and asked if they can help us out and it only benefits us, not only benefits us, the water department, but also fire department, the city as a whole, um, and also the, uh, ISO rating for the city as well. And then Jeff had mentioned, uh, the old water plant demo, so that's good to have that done. Uh, just a few goals, looking, looking forward to is, uh, continue with the water meters. Uh, the two five hundred thousand gallon storage tanks out the water plant are gonna be taken down, uh, cleaned inside, outside, any repairs that need to be done will get done this year. Um, we're kind of looking a little rough, a lot of algae growing on the sides, so we're gonna get them cleaned up and painted, if it needs to be painted again, they'll, they'll repaint it, so. Also, Teresa had mentioned the water main looping out on John Deere Road, Route twenty-six. Hopefully we'll continue to move forward with that. The need is great, greatly needed out there. And then, um, lead reduction by the Illinois EPA. A lot of people have seen that in the news. That's a big thing is, uh, whenever you come across a lead line, replace it. Do an inventory, what you've got for lead inventory. When the guys are in doing, uh, water meter changeouts, they're noting lead lines and letting the homeowner know that you do have a lead service coming in. So that's helping out for documenting the requirement how the EPA is though.
And we did put an application in for the grant to press planning.
Yes, yes, we did.
We took that, that first step with that.
Yeah, yeah, in order to get funding, you have to do that initial step of paperwork, so. Just a little briefing on the, on the staffing. Jeff did mention that we did get one, um, employee from power plant transferred out the wastewater and then we had one transferred from the streets to the water department. Both of them were working out tremendously. I got a retirement coming up and then, and it's a question of planning, which Teresa will touch a later date, but my two departments in the next five years, you're gonna see, um, probably three quarters of the staff retiring. So a big turnover. So that's all I got. Any questions?
Councilmembers, questions? If you could, Tim, uh, in your department, the two, I, you have two departments, let's go to the water department. You've got excellent people in both departments, but like, uh, for example, John Eggers, boy, he's, he's just crackerjack on the water side. He gets down the bowls and dresses little alligator, maybe a water bean break, so good for you to have that kind of person you're talking about that could be retiring in the future.
Yes, yes, definitely, losing a lot of, um, knowledge and a lot of guys that, um, aren't afraid to get dirty, give their hands into things. And not only John, but I would say all the staff, as they bend over backwards and they'll do whatever it takes to get the job done. They all do a great job.
That's great. It's a dirty job and all, I mean, your, each one of your departments is like, is there poop or pee or what?
We got the clean and the dirty.
Any, any questions, comments?
You, you had mentioned the, the lead and the meters. How about if the resident has the meters outside? I mean, the, the, that's how you wouldn't be able to see the pipes.
Well, yeah, all the meters are going inside. We're, we're putting the new meters inside, keep it freezing, so once we're inside the home, and a majority of them are, the meters down, down, downstairs and, you know, wherever.
When the actual wiring.
They actually run, the old ones had a wire that ran out to the outside.
Yeah.
Till box, so they're actually, the meter itself would be inside the house where that's where they're putting the new meters, so.
And for those that are, uh, they say on the market for something and you need to replace those, obviously you will contact the realty or the owner, there's kind of some property to be able to replace that. If those are on your radar.
Yeah, they're on the list, yeah. Normally that's a good time when you get a transition to, because you're gonna have to update down here. So also at that point, you might as well change the meter and do it all in one shot, you know, make it easier for the girl to handle that.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Scott, please.
I'll start off by saying we had our busiest year ever this year. By 157 more calls than in the previous. It's going up every year. Our personnel logged 6,733 training hours, not only in-house and like a resource hospital from down, but going out to training classes as well. We had 19 new spacers for our personnel this year. Some of the capital projects completed. We brought a truck and we bought a used deputy chief's vehicle. I will say, Fleet Maintenance did all the fabrication and installing and plumbing on them and did an amazing job and a considerable cost savings to the city. We outfitted both our engines with ELS non-transport equipment, so has medical equipment on it now. In case we get in a situation where we don't have enough personnel to bring an ambulance during a fire, we can assist with basically support measures often in the system. We installed a hot seat pressure washing system in the station. It's just, it's a lot more efficient than guys with, we try to keep them really clean, but without nets and wire and wiping them off. So that was installed this year. We planned on doing a cement project out front because as much as they're out there training and pumping, it's running in asphalt. Teresa and I decided to cut back on that because of some budget concerns, but we're hoping by spring we'll get that done this year. This year, we hired the deputy chief for the first time in 14 years. He's done an amazing job. He took over training, OSHA compliance, and he's in charge of all the maintenance operations. We established, I think I talked about it earlier in the year, we've done our building familiarization tours. We've done 30 of them, and so far only three have not allowed us to come in. Some other stuff from this year was, as Tim said, it was nice working with the water department, them kind of directing us, it helps us with ISO points and inspection and flow tests. Plus, we know we can put them in our mapping system that comes up when the call comes and choose better hydrants as we would need it. We've done a little bit more public relations stuff from open house, some vital checks, SANA, stuff like that. We've kind of got better going at that. In the last calendar year, we've unfortunately went through, or fortunately went through an OSHA inspection and ISO audit, and we're about two-thirds through a Medicare audit. That's pretty in-depth right now that that determines what Medicare pays ambulance services after that. We established auto weight agreements with Bureau and Fire Protection Districts that help us with personnel. And we now do two mutually trainedings a month with getting outlying districts that want to come to our training facility and train with us. Next year's goals, we already got an annual order to ship here in the fall of '24. We probably ordered it 18 months ago to lock in the price, even though they tried changing the price. But some other things, we're kind of, it's kind of hard to judge when we're not deep into the budget, where we set out what our goals are going to be. But one big thing we're looking at is equipment for electrical vehicle fires. It completely changes our strategy and tactics, and it definitely requires some different equipment, so. Another thing we're doing is we've had a couple more containers delivered out at the training facility. We're trying to make it NFA compliant where we can start to get ISO points from that to drive down our ISO rating. Besides that, we're just going to keep on with building familiarization tours, testing hydrants with the water department. Retirement, we just had one. He's now been replaced. We went through the complete list and ran out of our list. So we're in the process of retesting now. When that test comes out, we'll rehire to replace Joe Walty. Currently, I would say we're good for retirements for about, to about three or four years out, and then it accelerates quickly for about four years in for that, so. Any questions or comments?
Thank you very much, Chief. Thank you. And we're down to the chief. Oh, that, oh, that's so good. Let's go ahead, Victoria, if I should would, please. Forgot about that here.
Okay.
Victoria, the tourism director.
I brought our recent holiday issues there. Mark will post it if you guys want to check them out while you're checking. The 2023 year was a new year for me as Princeton's tourism director. I'd like to start off by saying how rewarding it has been to promote and attract tourism growth for a town that I have called home for 35 years, and that it's been a pleasure to work alongside and collaborate with the incredible staff and administration and City Hall and Princeton's department heads and crew. I began 2023 by taking a back-to-basis basics approach, reviving our dormant website, princetontourism.org. Check it out. With the help of Brett Jamison, and we now have a very user-friendly site with a list of places to stay, things to do, dining and nightlife options, and upcoming events. Another focus initiative this year has been successfully registering and collecting the 5% tax from Princeton's short-term lodging enterprises per the state ordinance in place. We have now partnered with local gov to streamline registrations and tax payments. Princeton tourism opportunities exist only because of the 5% tax collected. So we are optimistic that our revenue will continue to climb and so that we can keep growing tourism. Princeton Tourism has also established a tourism advisory committee consisting of five members. The district meets quarterly and helps with organization and planning of our annual tourism grant program, the STAR and PLAC program, and future initiatives to grow tourism. Another focus for tourism this year was building relationships with the city commissions and tourism driving events. A few examples include partnering with the Bike and Pedestrian Commission for Oktoberfest and co-hosting the first annual Z-Tour Bike Fest. When our great organizations can connect on projects, the outcome is even greater. Our 2023 street concert season was a success. We welcomed four new members to the street concert committee who brought fresh ideas to our planning meetings. We budgeted for 2,000 in food and alcohol vendor licenses and more than doubled what was budgeted. We also far exceeded our budgeted sponsorships this year, nearing $50,000 in sponsorships with the addition of community sponsorships, a Star Rock Country Community Foundation art grant, and a hefty increase in corporate sponsorships. As Teresa mentioned, it's hard to get a headcount on one of our streets, at one of our street concerts, but I can confidently say that our attending numbers rise with each year, and we are very excited about our 2024 lineup. We have explored new areas of marketing, increasing our outreach with publications like Bus Tours Magazine and The Northwest Quarterly, which covers southern Wisconsin, northern Illinois, the northwest suburbs of Chicago, and Indiana, Fort Wayne. And through these partnerships, oops, we have a municipal partnership with the Heritage Corridor, our regional certified visitors bureau. And through this partnership, we were able to score an ad in Midwest Living Magazine, which is a huge deal and always been a big goal for Princeton. I'm very proud of that one, so. In September, we tapped into the Chicagoland Territory with a month-long campaign with WGN. I attended the John Williams Show and promoted Princeton's offerings and annual events. And with that, we gained 250 subscribers who opted into our Princeton Weekend Getaway Package. And these opt-ins are, will be the first subscribed to our soon-to-be-launched e-newsletter, The Princeton Quarterly. Princeton's Main Street got a holiday refresh this year. Tourism helped coordinate with Jeff, Quentin, and their teams to get Main Street ready for the holidays, as well as Flowers by Julia and Meadows on Main. We closed out the year with a new venture, adding a Christmas concert at Princeton High School Auditorium. The Trans-Siberian Orchestra Tribute Band, The Christmas Livers, was a sold-out, 675-ticketed event. 2024 is going to be a great year. Some of tourism's goals include working with Festival 56 to schedule a bus trip. The Festival 56 group has a new member on their marketing team, and we are determined to make it happen this year to highlight the unique feature that Princeton has, a professional theater company. I will be training as the new homestead manager and hope to continue to carry out a successful 2024 year for us. And for 2024 marketing, my goal is to participate in annual subscriptions rather than month-to-month or radio, TV, and print publications. And I would also like to increase the exposure specifically in the Peoria and Bloomington areas. Additional goals include a refresh of our billboards on Interstate 80, a plan for a new wayfinding sign project, and produce tourism guides and brochures to be, to be made available for dispersing at hotels, Airbnbs, community centers, et cetera. My goal is to get this cost assisted with the Illinois DCEO Marketing Partnership Program grant. Our next venture is to host the quarterly Amtrak Corridor Coalition Meeting in February. And I'm talking so fast, here we go. And in closing, I'd like to highlight the importance of tourism and its direct and indirect impact on the economy of Princeton as tourist destination. It generates revenue and stimulates economic growth. Tourists spend money on hotels, restaurants, transportation, and entertainment, which generates income for local business and residents. My goal is to continue to grow tourism and make Princeton shine. Thank you.
Any questions to the council, any comments? Victoria, on your street council committee members, can you recognize two of those people? I know they put a lot of work into that. Who's on your council committee?
Michael Ziering, Tori Clark, Abby Taylor, all the department heads. Who am I missing? Tracy. Oh, Tracy Marlin, Greg Pearson, Kelly Sissel.
A lot of the carryover.
And you're there to help set up and tear down two of those. They're a long day for you guys.
Yeah, and a lot of our members, and Janet and Jerry, they all help out with the setup. It's a long day, but it's, it's fine.
Rewarding.
We appreciate you and appreciate your committees, so thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Are we down to just send for our please chief? Okay.
You're the next contestant. I'll try to be quick. So in 2023, we implemented the first responders court and wellness program, which Scott has also participated in, implemented the dementia-friendly community program, trained our officers on that, completed work on our new animal control facility, which was mostly funded through donations, worked with community partners to develop some temporary solutions for our homelessness here in town, worked with community partners to create easier access to mental health and substance use resources, and that also is happening in our, not just our community, but some surrounding communities. Conducted numerous in-house training activities to keep officers in compliance with state mandates, and being able to do that in-house saves us a lot of money. Continued efforts to upgrade our vehicle fleet to include newer, more efficient vehicles, which are equipped with most up-to-date tools. And we continue to work on our shooting range to update it to 100-yard range while staying in compliance with the state standards for ranges. So our staff changes, we hired Sergeant Woolley just about a month ago. He starts the academy next week. And Sergeant Dan Jaeger will be retiring on this coming Friday. Looking back at 2023 was a significant year for us in terms of working with the community to solve problems. Throughout the year, we worked with the Aruka Institute of Healing, Bureau County Senior Center, Second Story, Princeton Chamber, Princeton Rotary Club, OSF St. Clair, Princeton Lions, the Masonic Lodge, Boy Scouts, Bureau County Metro Center, Veterans Association, Ministerial Association, numerous other businesses and individuals to build solutions to issues that exist within our community. These community partnerships are critical in making Princeton a safer, cleaner, healthier place to live, work, and visit. Through our partnership with the senior center and the Rotary Club, we were able to purchase the systems, track persons with cognitive and memory issues should they become lost. Our officers are trained in the operation of the system, and we currently have a few community members enrolled in the program. Working with Princeton Chevy and the Princeton Rotary Club, we were able to add two fully-equipped electric bicycles to our fleet. For the last four years, we've worked with the Aruka Institute to develop programs to help members of our community who suffer from mental health and substance use issues. To illustrate the difference these efforts have made, I've compared the mental health and substance use calls we responded to between September 1st of 2021 and August 31st of 2022, and then between September 1st of 2022 and August 31st of 2023. During the earlier timeframe, our department responded to a total of 4,814 calls for service. Of those calls, 530, or 11%, were directly contributable to mental health and substance use. In the same timeframe, one year later, we responded to 5,286 calls for service. However, only not 192 of those were directly related to mental health and substance use, down to 3.6% of our total calls. There are many other calls where mental health and substance use are factors in the call, but not the primary issue. And it's difficult for us to quantify that sometimes because it's not the primary issue of the call. During, the reason why we've seen this decrease, during that latter timeframe, we worked with Aruka to build what's called the living room, which is a walk-in facility. Persons who are struggling with mental health and substance use crisis can go to receive assistance. In the space, they're met by trained recovery support specialists who, because of their own lived experiences, are able to walk alongside the guests and help them de-escalate their crisis and connect with appropriate resources. Now, instead of these being police-related contacts or unnecessary visits to the emergency room, they're handled discreetly in a HIPAA-compliant manner by persons trained to provide the services. Often, the initial visit to the living room becomes the first step, first step on the road to stabilization and recovery. As far as 2024, we're going to continue to build upon the solid foundation of partnerships that we have already built. There are many work坊 projects we are anticipating in 2024 that will enhance the quality of life for our community. By January 1st of next year, by state mandate, we must have body worn cameras on all of our officers. A staff member will be responsible for building and maintaining this program, and it will likely consume much of their time. There are many additional responsibilities that will need to be addressed due to the retirement of our most senior sergeant. Our dedicated training officer will continue, will continue to build training programs for our officers and officers from the surrounding area to stay in compliance with the ever-changing district training guidelines mandated by our state. We will also continue to work with our schools to make them a safe place to learn. And I wanted to thank all of our department heads that are here tonight because we worked with them on several different things that we wouldn't be able to get a lot of this done without their help. So I've given you guys a packet with a bunch of statistics in it for you to peruse on your own time. There's a lot of numbers in there.
Questions, comments from the council?
Health consumes a lot of your time. And we're working to try to be consistent.
I feel your department's got so many challenges, it's like a can of worms. And I don't mean that, it's just between what the state of Illinois mandates to you, and a lot of this is unfunded mandates, the body cameras, things like that, just goes on and on. So thank you very much for your department, we appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, well, that's it for this part of the program, so I want to thank all the department heads. I know you put some time in on this, and it's an opportunity for the council as a whole to get a feel for what happened last year. So I want to say thank you, each one of you for doing that. Appreciate that. And just like with the folks that were here earlier with the public comment, if you want to sneak out of here, you're good to go to do that because we're going to keep going on with more business, so we won't be offended. Thank you. Okay, now we're down to the ministers of the regular council meeting, please.
I'm willing to approve the minutes from our regular council meeting on December 18th, 2023.
Do you have a motion in seconds, any questions or comments? Third call rule.
Councilmember Newman.
Hi.
Gomez.
Hi.
LaCall.
Hi.
Lekransky.
Hi.
Mayor Mabry.
Hi, thank you. Now on to invoices, please.
For this period in the Department of Accounts and Finances, we have invoices totaling And the Department of Streets- In the Department of Streets and Public Improvements, we have invoices totaling ninety-one thousand, eight hundred forty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents. In the Department of Public Safety, we have invoices totaling one hundred forty-eight thousand, fifty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents. And in the Department of Public Property and Utilities, we have invoices totaling one hundred seventy-two thousand, eighty-four dollars and fifty-four cents, for a grand total of four hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars and thirty-two cents. Mayor, all council members present have confirmed their reviews of all invoices, and now we're submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve the invoices as presented.
A motion and a second have been made. Is there any questions or comments about the invoices? Seeing none, third call, roll.
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Gomez?
Aye.
McCall?
Aye.
McCrinsky?
Aye.
Mayor Mavry?
Aye, thank you.
Next on the agenda is ordinance O dash twenty-three dash zero-two-one. This is the second and final reading for an ordinance imposing a penalty of five percent for late payments on municipal hotel use taxes due from hotel, motel, short-term rental uses. Again, this is the second and final reading. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance, and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve ordinance O dash two-three dash zero-two-one.
We have a motion and a second, and at this point, I think you stop for just a moment, and normally, uh, Sonny, we wouldn't take any real comment at this point, uh, because we can take action, but if you have anything else you'd like to add as a courtesy to you, would you like to add anything?
I do, thank you. Would you like to speak?
Please come up to the podium, please.
Um, so I'd like to preface my additional comments, stating that I am one of the short-term rental owners that is paying the pillow tax. Um, I am registered, I am paying the pillow tax. Um, again, as I stated earlier, um, I'm, you know, attempting to be a good neighbor and promote the city of Princeton, um, in alignment with the goals of the city and tourism. So first, I'd like to ask, maybe it's hypothetically, but, um, how many of the, uh, short-term rental owners are registered? Do we know?
Do we have a total so far?
I believe five or six at this time. We went live today, so that, that's going to change, so.
And Victoria, is there like twenty-two units?
There's twenty-four total units. That doesn't necessarily mean the, like, the building itself. There are several units in some buildings.
Very good, thank you.
So, with that, uh, let's see, does pause a second? Um, I guess, I'd like to ask, again, maybe rhetorically, um, what prompted the city to, the council, to include this, uh, short-term rentals in tonight's ordinance? In that meeting?
Well, I believe it was just an all-inclusive thing, so it was an ordinance that would grab all motel owners, and then, of course, we just included the short-term rental, uh, owners as well, so it wasn't, we weren't singling out anybody, and we had some hotels, motels that were four or five months behind just because of various issues, and they, they are completely caught up as of right now, so that's good news. When that lender was sent out by Victoria, within a couple weeks, they all got caught up, so we appreciate that.
So, the hotel tax has been in place for quite some time, and the short-term rental have been, it became, uh, an ordinance in March, and alerted in July for some of us that it was going to be started. Um, and then another alert was in November at that meeting. Um, so, it's a little bit newer to us, and I feel, again, like I stated before, with very limited conversation regarding, for a very small population. Okay? Um, I'd like to ask you, do you feel like there has been enough communication with this very small group of people with short-term rentals?
Sure. I, I don't know if we're going to be able tonight to answer every one of your specific questions, I don't know if there's-
It's a little bit rhetorical.
I, but I would say this, that, uh, the more communication, obviously, the better. We've, we learn that on anything we do, and with the twenty-four Airbnb operator owners or units, uh, uh, you know, having another meeting with them in the middle of the winter might be a great time to do another, uh, meet and greet, and just share ideas, things like that, just more of a, of a, an opportunity, because we only had, how many came to that first initial meeting? Maybe like six different groups represented, six?
Yeah, probably six to eight.
Okay, so, there might be an opportunity to certainly repeat a, a nice social meeting, meeting with those folks, um, in the chamber could possibly host that, host as well as the, the, uh, Pride Building. So, next question, now we'll try, try. Quite time, yeah.
Um, and then, with this, with this ordinance on deck for a penalty, again, um, I'd like to ask, as far, maybe it's rhetorical, again, if majority of the neighboring counties, uh, communities have also imposed this, um, that are using this.
They have. Actually, they impose a penalty plus an interest-bearing penalty.
What, um, what local communities are doing this, do you know?
Well, we can research this a little bit more, but, that story is, I got the answer.
I mean, most neighboring communities, uh, LaSalle, Quincy, to, are similar in our size and location, um.
Yeah, we can get a list of people.
Um, and then, also, I would like to ask you, if it is correct that the auditing software that you are using, that the website, I had heard that there was a forty percent, uh, charge to use this website for the city of Princeton, is that-
For what is collected as delinquent. If it is not paid to the city, it is considered delinquent, if they do have to go to the extent to collect it from the Airbnb owner or, as Airbnb, Airbnb owner, they, then they get forty-five percent.
So they do, so they do it for free, if I submit it through the website?
Yeah, they don't take any of that.
They don't take any of that.
That's the incentive, is to get that collected locally.
Okay. But if I submit it on paper, does that cost you anything either? Is there an option? Did you guys give us that?
It's fine, yeah.
Okay. Um, so then, the other, I guess the other thing is, um, when I, when I saw that there's a penalty, obviously, I'm paying my taxes on it, and it's not quite an issue, but due to the lack of communication that I feel like we've had, and there's no other Airbnb owners here tonight aware of this issue, I did check with others, and they had not gotten any sort of communication regarding this meeting. So, I look at this as, I'm a parent, we've all, most of us have been parents, and I think it's easier to have improved communication rather than start a punitive action against those who are not in the communications with all this. Um, so, I would, again, I don't know how many, how many owners were notified of this meeting tonight, but I think it shows a lack of, um, communication, that we continue to have these issues come up regarding the Airbnb owners, or short-term rentals, but...
And I think that, you know, again, I think emphasis was for the hotels because we got ourselves behind a little bit, and we wanted to make sure we didn't do that again, so.
So, in closing-
Primarily, primarily for the hotels, you-
In closing, I'd like to ask Princeton City Council to walk back their policy on the pillow tax and the delinquency, uh, charge specific to the short-term rentals until we can have some more organized, organized conversations, um, regarding this and what this exactly means and how it's supposed to happen for the short-term rentals. Um, we had discussed the clarity of it. We, as Airbnb owners, personally, I can say that we want to foster, um, a collaborative relationship with the city of Princeton. I'm paying my taxes tonight, I have paid my taxes, and I would like to foster that collaborative relationship that I really do feel is lacking with the city of Princeton, the city manager, and the tourism. I'd like to reiterate that there are many short-term rental owners who have done significant upgrades to their property that we're sitting vacant. Um, the, the neighborhood that had come here tonight, I can relate to that property and the frustration. Um, I'm certain our community assessments are going to reflect that as well, so we are contributing to the city. We have collectively added, uh, to the city's ability for lodging during events that the tourism has promoted by the city as well, wedding venues, and we go above and beyond promoting our shops and restaurants to keep our visitor dollars in Princeton and our small communities. Likewise, we live and spend our dollars here as well. But all in all, I want to thank you guys, I think Princeton's a great place to live, and you for your service.
Thank you, Sonny. Uh, just on, did you get fined, or are you going to pay a penalty?
No, I personally am not, and I'm here because I want to improve the relationship with the short-term rental owners tonight, because when I talk to different ones, they're a little bit upset about it. Um, sometimes they know about stuff, sometimes I find out about stuff. Um, I think there's just a lack of communication. It's not hard, but the fact that, I don't know what the letter was, but the fact that it was addressed to me and it was a certified letter, that's easy. Call me up, I got my email. It's just, it's not friendly. Just, let's make it friendly, let's make it neighborly. That's what I'm saying. There can be a lot of communication that can happen. Not a big deal.
You could be an advocate for these owners as well, to encourage them to get a meeting put together.
I have worked on that.
Okay, that'd be great.
With Tori. I don't know, maybe a couple of them, so, but I know that the city has our addresses and our phone numbers and where we are.
That would be very helpful for us as well.
Thank you. Very good. And, Sonny, if you do get something going on that, I'd like to be able to co-host that, we could go to the chamber and do the Princeton Room, something like that, some refreshments, to get the whole group together, have a little get-together, just kind of talk about, because we consider you guys an asset, there's no doubt about it. It's a unique type of, of, uh, living arrangement, and we really, you know, when we're short of hotels as it is, uh, so we appreciate what you've been doing, so.
Thank you, I, I don't have the address.
Well, maybe we can figure out how we could have, have that work out.
Would you be happy to work with you guys?
Let's, let's see if we work a little closer with, uh, I'll, um, be the ladies on, through you to help you with this, we'll see what we can do. Okay, very good. Um, any other comments or questions for the council, otherwise, third call, roll.
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Gomez?
Aye.
McCall?
Aye.
McCrinsky?
Aye.
Mayor Mavry?
Aye, thank you. Now we're down to the city management report, please.
In your packets, the, uh, police fire prevention report for November twenty-three. Um, you also, I gave you, I think I sent it to you actually on Friday as well, the upcoming fiscal year twenty-five, uh, budget schedule, so we have that laid out to, um, have everything, uh, processed done and adopted by April fifteenth. Um, we've already kind of gotten a jumpstart on some of the, the projects, so that'll, that'll help ease into that, through, into that process. Uh, also, just so you're aware, um, I am working on the amendments to this year's budget as well, so this should be rolling out in the next couple of weeks. I'll be sitting out with the department heads to figure out areas that we need, um, a little more funding, or areas that we can move some of the funds around, so, um, that's all happening, so. It's a bit, very busy time.
Very good. Any else, Theresa?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Well, you'd be happy to know, the mayor's report's very, very brief, um, and just again, uh, thanks to department heads for putting this all together. Uh, every one of you department heads, I appreciate what you do. Um, it's a tough job, making, you know, you're, you're trying to, uh, put together a program for an entire year, and it's always a moving target, you have got a certain amount of money to work with and resources, so I appreciate what you do, I mean that in all sincerity, the council appreciates what you do. With that, I'm going to move on now to any old business? Any new business? Any additional public comments? Seeing none? Jerry, you want to close out the meeting?
I move that we adjourn our regular meeting this evening, and meet in for our next council meeting on Monday, January fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, six p.m. at City Hall.
Motion and second, third call, roll.
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Gomez?
Aye.
McCall?
Aye.
McCrinsky?
Aye.
Mayor Mavry?
Aye, thank you, the meeting is adjourned. Feel free to stick around, want a visit? See you. Good luck.